Okay, welcome to the regular board meeting for the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, June the 18th, 2013. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Father, the Holy Spirit, and One Nation, Unto God, In The Face of the Light, with liberty, justice, and all other things that come from it.
Supervisor Adrian Tessier is stuck in traffic, but she'll be here shortly. Do we have roll call?
Sure can. Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Groom?
President.
Supervisor Slocum?
Here.
Yeah, it's here.
I think that's her.
President Horsley?
Here. Should we do it real slow?
Hey Supervisor.
Well, we'll give her a minute. Yes, okay.
Okay, on our way.
Okay. Next is public comment. We have one person for public comment, Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Horsley, honorable members of the board, and my fellow veterans. Supervisor Slocum, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers, and Mr. Holland, thank you for your service to the county. Please give some hope to family members of persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment by voting to implement Laura's Law. Poll Agenda item number 21, you'll see $2.3 million being spent on mentally ill jail inmates. Poll Agenda item number 24, $800,000 on the PREP program is also on the consent agenda. Laura's Law is a positive outcome-producing procedure that creates a treatment compliance behavioral situation that is certified to be effective, efficient, and economical by the United States Department of Justice. Policies and procedures that limit mental health treatment to only those persons living with mental illness who lack the capacity to understand their need to volunteer for treatment imposes a meaningless and unproductive life that promotes the diversion of resources away from positive outcome-producing treatment to failures like the $1.2 million BHRS spent on PREP last year. Laura's Law creates a treatment compliance behavioral situation that reflects the assumption of responsibility for public health and safety. Ineffective, expensive, and inhumane programs like PREP fill the pockets of favorite vendors like the Family Service Agency of San Francisco, whose intellectually and morally bankrupt leadership has no treatment for, treatment resistance. Please give some hope to family members of persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment voluntarily, vote to implement Laura's Law, and demonstrate a commitment to producing positive outcomes instead of favorable publicity. There is and there never was an unfettered right to control one's treatment when an untreated illness or disease endangers public health and safety. Political correctness is dangerous.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Now it's time to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda.
Move the consent calendar and adopt the agenda.
Second. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. First item is a presentation of awards. A presentation of a resolution honoring the 100th anniversary of 4H Youth Development Program of California. Supervisor Adrian Tessier?
Timing is everything, right?
That's it.
Okay, yes.
We heard you coming in the door.
I was running in the door. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. President. The purpose of this presentation today deals with the fact that the National 4H has provided over 7 million American youth with workshops and service learning opportunities in specialized areas including communications, leadership, career development, livestock, home improvement, and computer technology skills. California's program is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year. The 4H administered through a partnership of government agencies including the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the University of California, and county governments. The UC Cooperative Extension Office in Half Moon Bay administers 4H of San Mateo County. 4H of San Francisco and San Mateo County provides countless hours of community service and volunteer activities, including annual events such as Earth Day and Peninsula Pride Youth Farming Project, which is featured each year at the San Mateo County Fair. And hopefully many of you attended the fair this past week. It was quite wonderful. The 4H Youth Development Program of San Francisco and San Mateo Counties is honoring agriculture and environmental stewardship history of the 4H. It has also established Million Trees Project, near a goal of planting 1 million trees in San Mateo County, with 700,000 trees already planted. And I have this resolution here today which honors the 100th anniversary. And I understand Caitlin Sutherland, a college freshman here at San Mateo, with San Mateo County 4H All-Star, will be accepting this resolution. And will also, they're in attendance, it's Victoria, I'm going to ruin this name, Soland, Katrina Hall, and maybe Keegan. So if Kate, is Kate here? Great, Kate.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Sutherland. I was a 2011 to 2012 California 4H State Ambassador, and I am a current 4H All-Star in San Mateo County. So in 1902, researchers in our nation's leading land-grant universities came up with new agricultural farming techniques. These researchers found that the older farmers were not adaptable to change. So the researchers in turn taught the kids of the farmers these new agricultural techniques, and thus the 4H program was born. In 1913, the forerunner of California 4H was founded, an agricultural club in, at the College of Agriculture in Davis. The goal of these clubs was not only to train youths in agricultural skills, but to influence the practices of adult farmers and homemakers through their ongoing projects. Today, 4H is the leading youth development organization in America and throughout the world for youths ages 5 to 19, and still has many of the same roots in agriculture, but is also changed and adapted to fit the changing times in the 21st century. San Mateo County 4H has helped many of its original 4H projects that 4H was founded upon, such as lambs, goats, sewing, cooking, and horticulture, to name a few. But we also have expanded to unique projects like cake decorating, duct tape art, drama, the 4H Million Trees Project, and robotics, in order to reflect the world we live on today. This year, in 2013, California 4H is 100 years old, marking a tremendous achievement for the world of agriculture and youth development. To celebrate this centennial, California 4H started a campaign called the Revolutionary Responsibility, where 1,000 different 4H youth service learning projects can be granted up to $1,000 each to implement their projects. San Mateo County has already received two of these Revolutionary Responsibility grants, and more are currently being written in the works. I thank you for support for the 4H program and for this resolution formally recognizing the centennial, and for your support and recognition. With your support, we can help 4H continue to thrive for the next 100 years. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I guess to make it formal, I'll make a motion to pass that resolution.
And on favor? Aye. I did see a number of the young 4H people at the fair, and they just take such wonderful care of those animals. It's just, it's almost like, it must be hard to part with some of them, they take such good care of them, so. I bet it is, huh? Yeah. Well, congratulations, thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you for your great work. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is a presentation of a resolution honoring Jan Christensen as Superintendent of the Year for Region 5 of the Association of California School Administration. Supervisor Warren Slocum.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to make a motion to approve this resolution in just a moment, make a few remarks, and then invite the superintendent and maybe some of her colleagues up to speak, and maybe introduce a couple of people. So first, let me make a motion to approve the resolution to honor Superintendent Jan Christensen.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Jan Christensen, as everybody knows, is the superintendent of the Redwood City School District, and she was recently named as Superintendent of the Year for Region 5 of the Association of California School Administrators. Now, Region 5 includes San Francisco and San Mateo Counties. It's comprised of some 25 school districts, some 300 schools, and a whopping 158,000 students. Jan joined the Redwood City School District as superintendent in May of 2006. Under her leadership, the district has embraced educational reforms, new instructional strategies that resulted in significant academic gains, a narrowing of the achievement gap among a very diverse student population, and numerous awards and honors for the district's schools. And all of this was accomplished, I might add, against a backdrop of uncertain state of funding for schools, as well as a complex set of laws and regulations that govern, obviously, district operations. During her role as superintendent, Jan has developed and strengthened partnerships between the district, local government, businesses, nonprofits, including the City of Redwood City, San Mateo County, the Sequoia Healthcare District, the Education Foundation, as well as Stanford University. And I think all of those collaborations have resulted in the district's ability to continue to provide strong support and academic support services to the students. Just a couple of other noteworthy things, if I could. I wanted to mention that the entire Redwood City School District, kindergarten through third grade teaching staff, won a San Mateo County Literacy Award for their work in using assessments to improve reading, which is something very important to this board. And next, the Redwood City School District was one of 11 districts statewide to win a Champion for Fitness Spotlight Award from the California Governor's Council on Physical Fitness and Sports. A couple of personal things, Jan went to school in Michigan, my home state, so go Michigan. And she also taught, she moved to Alaska, of all places, and taught at the University of Alaska at Anchorage. Her specialties were leadership, organizational development, and politics. And she's obviously put all that to good use here in the Redwood City School District in our county. So before I introduce to you Jan Christensen, Superintendent of the Year from Region 5, let me introduce some of her colleagues that are here. And first, let me introduce her husband, Bill Christensen, right back there. Hi, Bill.
Hi, Bill.
And trustees McBride, Alyssa McAvoy, and Hillary Paulson are also here, right back there. So with that, I would invite Jan up to the podium here, and I'll present this resolution, and then perhaps we can encourage her to say a few words. Perhaps.
Perhaps.
I feel like we have a very strong relationship with San Mateo County. And also, I want to thank the city manager, assistant, and county council, John Byers. We've worked together many times. I really feel like this is an award that I accept on behalf of the district. I am blessed to work in an amazing school district with an amazing staff. Most of our staff are in professional development today, training on the Common Core. School is already closed, it's the second-to-last day for teachers. And I also have a fantastic school board. I brag about how well we all work together for serving our children, because that's our mission. And I lastly have to thank my husband, whom I have known since I was 16. We've been married 43 and a half years, and he truly is the wing, the wind underneath my wings. So thank you, all of you, for this honor and recognition on behalf of the district.
We actually have two speakers on this. One is the, one of the trustees, Dennis McBride, who says Jan rocks. And then after that is Alyssa McAvoy. Dennis? That's it, that's it. You're on.
So...
You don't need to do that, he'll pick it up. Oh, Dennis, we may have to send you to school.
Actually, being on the school board is penance for what I did in school. So first, I'd like to thank you for honoring Jan. Jan's an amazing person. Never follow Warren, because I had all these notes that I made, and Warren pretty much covered it. But I thought I'd give you a little, also, I'd like to thank the teachers, and a humongous thanks to Jan. You know, what makes Jan so special? First off, all she cares about is the students. Everything is student-concentric. She's taken on tasks that most people would say can't be done, like we used to have year-round school and traditional school, and we couldn't afford it. And that's a very emotional issue, and Jan just dealt with it and saved us quite a bit of money. And Jan has these little sayings that kind of make it really understandable. Grandma, and I wouldn't send my kid to that school, so we have to fix it, so I could send my grandchild to that school. So very nice way of doing it. She never complains. To give you some color to the budget, 10 years ago when I joined the board, we had $100 million and 8,000 kids. Today, we have 9,200 kids and 80 million. And never once, as Jan said, I can't do it because I don't have the money. Jan always says, it's about the kids, let's stay focused, and let's do what's right. So thank you very much for honoring her, and thank you for all you've done.
Thanks, Dennis.
Hello, I wanted to say thank you very much to the Board of Supervisors for honoring Jan Christensen. We know what a fantastic leader she is in our school district, in the county, and up and down the state. She's been involved in a lot of committees that have helped not only our particular school district, but also those in the county and the state. And Jan is very humble, she always says it's a team effort, but really, you need a leader at the top of the team to make it work. So Jan, on behalf of the school board and all the kids in our district, thank you very much for all your hard work over so many years, and we appreciate everything you do every day for the kids in our community. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Hillary Paulson, I'm going to squeeze in on Alyssa's time, I'm also a board member. So just a great thank you to Jan and to the board for honoring her. We have been very blessed with her, and as Dennis said, she has come into our district, you know, when the finances go down, Jan is strong for us. Today, our teachers are all training, and I feel like especially over the last few years, she has definitely revitalized the feeling of our teachers in our district despite the difficulties we have. But I think the best way to honor her is to say that I see that our 4H commission today is Redwood City schoolchildren and a Redwood City teacher. I see a member of the youth commission over there, who I know went through the Redwood City School, so I think that's the best honor that Jan could have. Thank you.
Thanks, Hillary. And I know my children, and Warren's children went through the Redwood City School District too, so we appreciate what you've done for my children as well. Did we actually pass that resolution? Did we do that? Are we dead? We did, okay. Good, in that case. The next one is a presentation of an annual, the annual report by the youth commission, or of the, by the youth commission, Supervisor Carol Groom.
Thank you, Mr. President. These kids need no introduction, really, with the work that our youth council in San Mateo County does. They serve on our boards and commissions, they cast votes on a regular basis, they advise us with very, very wise information and very, very wise comments. And so I'm very pleased to introduce three of them today who are going to take us through the youth commission's work. Amir Marion, who is the incoming president, Mia Semelman, who is the outgoing president, and Calvin Lau.
Hello, everyone. As Supervisor Groom introduced us, we are the San Mateo County Youth Commission. I'm Mia Semelman, I was the co-chair for last year. I was also a member of Legislative Committee and a liaison to respect 24/7.
Hi, everybody, my name's Calvin Lau, and I am a member, as well as the chair, of the Environmental Protection Committee.
Hi, everyone, my name's Amir Marion, I'm going to be the chair next year of the commission. I was also chair, and will be continuing as chair of our Legislative Committee, and also served as our youth liaison to the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council. With that, let's start. Oh, do I? Oh, oh my gosh, this is really cool. Awesome. So the youth commission is celebrating its 20th year, founded by the board in 1993. And the youth commission serves to represent the youth voice, really, all around, all throughout the county, not only by providing the youth perspective within the different board and committees, board commissions that we sit on, but also by providing recommendations through our committees to local bodies of government, and by interacting with these other local bodies of government. And definitely this year, we've really stepped up on providing policy recommendations to the county and to different school districts. And also, one of our newest goals and top priorities for this year is promoting more youth leadership throughout the county.
Thank you, thanks, Amir. So who we are, we, there's 25 of us, and we're from all over the county. You know, we have some people in North County, as well as down in East Palo Alto, I'm pretty sure. And we are, there's some people who are still in middle school, and there are people who are in community college within the county. So we have a wide range of people, and I know the executive board was really interested in getting that diversity and getting all those different perspectives. So that's who we are.
This year, we really prided ourselves on having a big kind of diversity, as Calvin said. We had undocumented immigrant youth this year, as well as youth with mental illness, youth who have emancipated, different economic backgrounds, and we really, like Calvin said, we really tried to look for that diversity and different perspectives within the commission. So the changes that we made for this year, we did implement a two-day orientation, which was kind of like a retreat. It's where the youth had their training, they kind of learned what it's like to be a commissioner, and we really thought that this would get the year started, so they weren't coming into the year going, wait, what am I supposed to do, which kind of happens every year. And we did create five standing committees, which was a new idea. We previously had two tracks where they could sit on Policy Track, and that was working as a group, and a group project. And then we had the Board and Commission Track, where you could have, you could sit on a Board or Commission in the county and give, you know, have your vote and work on an individual project. So there was a concern that we would lose our voice in local government if we had, if we worked in five individual committees instead. But each committee aligned with the government body to complete their projects, so it was a good thing that we didn't lose that, that voice, that there was a concern about. And we did make, being a youth liaison to another county Board or Commission voluntary, but we did have more youth who wanted to be liaisons this year, which was surprising because it was voluntary, and youth were really interested in what they were doing. And all five supervisory districts had at least one youth representation this year.
So the commission also has three subcommittees. The first is our executive board, which works to create all the agendas for our meetings, and also sits and runs all of our meetings. Our two co-chairs were Mia Semelman and Karen Chi. And also, the executive board serves to just motivate our youth and get our youth participated in all of our discussions. Our youth conference subcommittee did not do any work this year because we did not have a youth conference this year. We supplemented that with our youth town hall, but this coming year, we will have a youth conference again, so that subcommittee will be having a lot of work in the coming year. And our last subcommittee was our procedural rules subcommittee, which worked over the summer to create proposals and amendments to our bylaws, which was then adopted by the entire commission.
Thanks. So Amir kind of hinted on the youth town hall, which is one of our big events, one of our big events from last year. And we worked with a former youth commissioner, James Pollack, on kind of planning and organizing the event. We had over 100 people come, and the kind of structure was, we would have youth kind of previously express an interest in a certain different kind of problem in our county, they would break out into groups, and they'd try to plan resolutions around that and maybe continue the work after the town hall. There's definitely a lot of growth for this event, and we're not really sure if we're going to do something like this again, or revert back to the youth conference. So that's one of the talking points that's on the table within the exec board this year.
So our five standing committees, which we'll go into a little bit more detail about, Adolescent Needs Committee, which used to be Policy Track, Environmental Protection Committee, Immigrant Youth Committee, Ledge Committee, and Teen Stress and Happiness. And so we'll go into detail now about each of the committees.
So I'm filling in for, I'm actually not on Adolescent Needs Committee. Big shocker. Our chair, Jackie Cortez, couldn't make it today, but they've been doing a lot of great work this year. One of the big things they're working on is the 2014 Adolescent Report, and that was started last year by the Policy Track, and now this committee is continuing it. They're distributing, as well as collecting, the survey, and putting the data, working with an epidemiologist. So they did a lot of good work there. They also organized the Human Trafficking Forum, which was in March, it was in the spring. And that brought in a bunch of different experts who kind of deal with human trafficking within the county with minors. So that was also a great event for them. And for the Adolescent Needs Report, they're hoping that they can have all the data kind of digested and present that at the 2014 Youth Conference. Oh, that is me. So this is my committee. This is the Environmental Protection Committee, and we are new this year. We, it's, yeah, it's a new commission, this committee this year, and our mission was to inform youth about environmental issues in San Mateo County. So we kind of brainstormed what would be the best way to do that. So we decided to hold a fair, like a kind of, something kind of like a flea market within the county, and we brought in a bunch of different vendors from all across the bay, who kind of have a fundamental focus in sustainability and environmental protection. We had to kind of contact local businesses, we had to set up the venue, which was actually right outside, and we worked with counties to kind of reserve all the facilities and kind of organize all those events. Thank you. So some of the results of it, we had about 420 people or so in attendance, which was about what we were expecting, somewhere between 300 and 500 people. And we had 21 different booths and vendors, some of them were selling their products, some were advertising, kind of initiatives that we kind of resonated with. And it was definitely one of, I guess, the proudest moment for me was it being completely youth-organized. It was run by about six people, and we had met a bunch of the time so that we could kind of organize it and kind of really do it by ourselves. And some future plans and goals is to hopefully create a community garden, working with a different organization with that, and repeat the eco-friendly fair next year and have it be better than it was this year.
So this year, the Immigrant Youth Committee wanted to look into the juvenile justice system, they wanted to look at like the gaps and why things, you know, were, different statistics were showing that a certain group were more in the juvenile justice system than others, but that because of internal conflicts, they weren't able to really go into that topic as much. And they wanted to do a photo voice event, which was looking for a very specific group of people, immigrant youth who were LGBT, and that's very specific, and they weren't able to find enough people to participate in the event. But one of the main things that they do, that they've been doing for the past two years is the Passion, Dedication, and Determination Immigrant Youth Award. So as it says, it was established in 2012. They had 18 applicants this year, which was, or sorry, 16 applicants this year, which is more than ever. Yes, and so this slide shows our winner, Manuel Gonzalez, and he got a refurbished laptop, so. And also, senior Letitia Soto. So, and also, Senior Letitia Soto. So, that was a great project and very successful this year.
So, I chaired the Legislative Committee. So, one of the projects that we wanted to continue on was providing support for bills that were being proposed in Sacramento. So, in the past year, we asked for the Board of Supervisors' support on AB 1856 and AB 1956, and the Board did send letters of recommendation to the California State Legislature, and Governor Brown did pass both, which is very exciting. And then, we're also continuing into next year, asking for the support of ACA 7, which is an amendment to the state constitution, and also AB 1266. Another great thing that we did this year was ask for the Board of Supervisors to become a member of the Children's Movement, and they did in December, which was very exciting. And also, continuing into next year, we're going to be working on asking different school districts within the county to implement a transgender youth school policy. We were inspired by LA Unified's own policy that they implemented starting in 2005, and we're going to be working with different school districts around the county to try and get that passed so that there's less discrimination towards transgender youth. Also, I'll be filling in for our co-chair from last year, who chaired the Teen Stress and Happiness Committee. So, the Legislative Committee was inspired by the Teen Stress and Happiness Committee to create its own policy because the Teen Stress and Happiness Committee created an anti-bullying policy for the county school districts, especially centered around cyberbullying. And so, they worked with Superintendent Campbell, Respect 24/7, and different members of County Council, especially Kathy Muela, to develop this anti-bullying school policy. And they're currently working with La Honda-Pescadero Unified School District to implement it. They also are going to be meeting with Woodside Elementary School District in July to talk about the policy. So, that's a really exciting work about getting youth involved in implementing policy around the county. And also, on the lighter note, the Committee created a blog on Tumblr for high school students, sort of as a place for them to de-stress, really just post happy thoughts. So, as Mia talked about, we continued having a very large presence on different Commissions and Boards throughout the county. We actually had more representation this year than in the past, even though we had students mainly, I mean, youth mainly working within their own committees. So, we continued having representation on past Board and Committees, but also were able to bring in youth on new and, to new initiatives and new Boards and Commissions.
All right. So, one of the awards we love giving out every year is the Outstanding Adult Ally Award. And Adult Allies are people who are on Commissions, who work with the youth liaisons and kind of guide them through the process, which can be very intimidating, you know? We have some people who are very young, so they always are really helpful. And this year, we, I think, had five nominations, and they were all great people. And the person who kind of outright won the award was John Andrews, who's with HIV Board. And he's really awesome. He comes to all of our events, and he's very supportive of us, and he always likes to share his story and kind of make sure that we, as youth, kind of know what we're getting into, whatever he's kind of talking about. So, we really appreciate him, we really respect him, and he was definitely the right person to win this year.
So, some of our proposed changes for next year, we are going to be continuing with the Committee structure and having the same committees as we did last year. Also, we're going to reinstate the San Mateo County Youth Conference, do that in the spring of 2014. Also, we're going to make sure that we continue to be working with different governmental bodies, continue our, you know, very vast interaction with them. Also, an important change is that we are changing from having co-chairs, as we have in the past, to having a Chair and Vice Chair, just to follow the structure of the other Board and Committees. And also, we'd like to introduce our new Program Coordinator, Brooke Costello, who's going to be taking over after Sarin Pendleton-Noll. And we're really excited to have her. She's been with us this entire year, and she's been absolutely amazing.
So, this is our new Board, Exec Board, for next year. So, our Chair, Amir, and then Vice Chair, Felipe Afanador, Adolescent Needs Committee Chair, Maxwell Weinstein, Environmental Protection Committee Chair, Henry Rule, Immigrant Youth Committee Chair, Araceli Effahenyo, and Legislative Committee Chair, Amir. And Teen Stress and Happiness Committee Chair, Bryce Zircher, who is a public member. So, this is the first time we've had a public member, so a member that's not of the Youth Commission, win a bill election of the Chair. So, that was really exciting for us.
So, there's just a lot of people and organizations we'd like to thank who are really integral to all of our successes here, the San Mateo County Health Department, the Policy and Planning Unit, Supervisor Kellroom, thank you so much, Star Vista, the Board of Supervisors, and all the Boards and Commissions and all the Adult Allies. And special thanks to Brooke and Sarin for kind of helping us throughout the year and guiding us. Couldn't have done it without you.
So, now, if you guys have any questions for us, we can answer them. If not, that's great, too. But we don't mind answering any questions.
Let me just say thank you to Star Vista, who we have a contract with, and that's where Brooke and Sarin come from. They've been great leaders for the young people. They've provided great inspiration, but they also know when to stand back and let the Youth Commission go. And it's, for all of you, it's my honor to be the liaison. I just love working with these young people, and I think they had a four-star year this year, and it's going to be tough to compete. Amir, next year, with, under your leadership, you're going to have a big job. Thank you very much, all of you, for being here today.
Just one quick thing before you go. Like to thank you for your work. Obviously, as Supervisor Groom said, you had a stellar year. Especially want to call out, give a shout out. Actually, I tweeted a congratulations to you this morning. Did you, did anybody see that? Not yet, okay. But I wanted to put in a plug. God knows, we all need happiness here. This Tumblr blog is smchappiness.tumblr.com, which is designed to make people laugh and smile. So, thank you for that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amazing, amazing amount of work they did this year. Thank you, Supervisor Groom, for bringing that to us. The next is a presentation by the San Mateo County Parks Foundation. Julia Bott.
President Horsley, members of the Board, I'm Julia Bott with the San Mateo County Parks Foundation, and we're here today to provide our annual report to you. First, I want to acknowledge our Board of Directors, two of whom are in the audience, our Chair, Connie Sevier, and our newest member, Kristy Morrell. You may look at this list and recognize a few names. We have many retired county employees now serving on our Board, and I think what this really indicates is that the quality of the people who work for the county care about the county, and they continue to care about the county once they retire. And we really appreciate the perspective and the involvement and engagement that they bring. Earlier today, you accepted a donation from us, our annual donation, which was a little over $100,000. And earlier this year, we provided over $388,000 for the promenade, bringing our total contributions for this year in excess of a half a million dollars. The, I'll go into some of these other projects in a minute, but I want to talk about the Promenade Repair. This has been a project that's been in design for a while, and it's going to add a lot of benefit at Coyote Point. Through the design and through the Parks Department working with the users, they've also addressed some of the changing uses in terms of access at Coyote Point, especially with Magic Mountain now being so close to the western side of the Bay. And with the new access ramps, those user conflicts are going to be reduced. And my conversations with the windsurfers, some of whom are engineers, are very impressed with an exclamation mark in their emails about the design and about how much thought went into the project. In our contributions today, we supported the volunteer program, which was our first donation ever, and it remains our priority. Carla Shof, Community Specialist for the Parks Department and the Rangers, do a wonderful job recruiting and supporting the volunteers who come into the parks, and we're proud to provide funding to support their, to provide their supplies and other training and recruitment efforts. You may have already heard this from a report from the Parks Department, but in the past year, there's been over 35,000 hours worth of volunteer time contributed to our parks, which again, shows how much our community cares about them. The Student Conservation Association Crew is another project that is core that we support. We've been supporting two summer crews for the past four years, and this year, we were able to add a spring crew. This crew camped at Memorial during spring break. They were recruited exclusively from the Pescadero and La Honda community. The picture at the bottom right shows actually that they brought their entire family for a dinner. So, they were able to share what they were doing with their family, which is what we always really encourage in both the volunteer program and the Student Conservation Association. Share this with your family, bring them back to the parks, show them what you do, and continue on that legacy of supporting our parks. This is also a great program for the department in that it provides some succession training for future, for future Rangers. We have one Ranger in the program, one Ranger now who came out of this program, and a variety of park aides have come out of this program. You've heard about bringing back the Bay Checker Spot Butterfly, and again, this is really one of the great habitat restoration programs that we focus on. It's not the only one that we support with our donations, but it clearly gets a lot of press. And it's finally having some success. They've been bringing back thousands of caterpillars and coming back with hundreds of butterflies. And as Mr. Hollen can attest from entomology, his entomology background, that is how insects do it. That's how they survive. They have lots of offspring because they have a small percentage that survive. So, but this is showing success. One of the things that we say we do in terms of raising funds is that we either raise funds for programs that protect the habitat or that enhance the experience for the visitor. This program is one of those cases where we do both. By enhancing the habitat for this threatened species at Edgewood, we're bringing back all the wildflowers, which are so enjoyed by those visitors who come to Edgewood. So, it's always great to have a twofer in our projects. Bicycle Sunday, we do support Bicycle Sunday, and we do that primarily by the funds raised through the Tour de Peninsula, which is coming up on Sunday, August 4. Supervisor Groom is our honorary Chair, but we do invite everyone to attend. I have to say, the Kids Ride at Noon is great fun, but we invite everybody to attend either as a rider or as a volunteer. We do need over 200 volunteers to make it a safe and successful ride, and I think in a couple of weeks, you'll probably see a countywide email helping us recruit volunteers. So, I hope we get some good response for that, because again, I think we've shown that the county employees really do step up to help the community. So, we are always looking for the, to the future, and our continued support of these core programs will be, again, a priority for us. We have an elusive goal, and that is to just raise unrestricted dollars to be put to where they're needed most. But that's difficult to do because people are always looking at where their dollar's going to go. We try to report back so that we can tell them how well their dollars are being spent, such as we're doing here today, so that we can continue those donations. But that still does remain an elusive goal for us. We are building a planned giving effort, and that is one of the ways to raise funds in the future. And we are growing the organization, and we really need your help in that. You could possibly do that by speeding up some more county retirements. But actually...
Have anybody in mind, by chance?
But you are all in touch with the community leaders, and those are the ones who will also engage in helping us reach the people who enjoy the parks. And we look to have our Board represent the diversity found in our parks. So, as you're out in the community, keep us in mind. Send us a lead. Set up a lunch with one of our Board members and someone from the community. We really need your help in recruiting people so that we can continue to raise money for the county park system. And with that, I just want to thank you for continuing support. We do appreciate it.
Thank you as well. And thank Connie and Kristy. Any comments? You know what things that occurred to me is, actually Supervisor Tessia and I met with some people from San Francisco, actually the mayor of San Francisco, and they were talking about jobs for youth. I just wonder if that youth employment program could potentially be expanded in our parks in the summertime for jobs for youth. It might be something that worthwhile pursuing, looking at. Yes, Supervisor Pine?
I just wanted to thank the foundation for their support of the Coyote Point Promenade Project. That's really a big improvement for that park, which is heavily used by people in the county. If I recall, there is one particular very generous donor at Coyote Point that has made a big difference, so I thank that donor. And it was a good effort to seek both private money and grants to get that project done. So, that's an exciting one for us.
We're now going to go to our 9:00 AM. I got to open the public hearing. It's the resolution approving the issuance by the San Mateo County Joint Powers Financing Authority of not to exceed $50 million aggregate national, aggregate principal amount of lease revenue bonds to finance capital improvements to certain fire stations within the county and the refunding of all or a portion of the outstanding lease revenue bonds. Mr. Malphy and Mr. Byers?
Mr. President, members of the Board, this item, as you indicated, is, really does two things. One, it refinances our 97, 99, and 2001 bond series, and in the process of doing that, we anticipate saving approximately $207,000, given the favorable interest rates in today's market. And the other is to borrow money for the construction and replacement of the Skyline to Fire Station. There are four actions in the resolution that we would recommend that you take. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Well, just one question. We did have a couple of other, another fire station, the one in Pescadero, is that in a separate area somewhere?
The Pescadero Station, did we include that, Jim, in this, or?
No, we're going to do that with the jail because we're still trying to figure out if we're going to build it in the same place because of the flood.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's good. Yes, Supervisor Pine?
Just a question about the Skyline to Fire Station. So, the memo mentions that we're refinancing 39 million, so I should assume that the, that station is approximately 11 million dollars?
Well, no, their issuance costs are part of that.
Of course, the cost.
The station, I think, is about 3 million.
Okay.
I have one speaker on this. It's Carrie LaBelle, but I think you might be actually, it's actually 6, not 5A. Okay, thank you, okay.
Mr. President, if I may, there was a public hearing requirement on this item. So, at some point, we need to open the public hearing.
I think I said that I was opening a public hearing.
All right. And I'll move to close the public hearing since there's no speakers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so...
I'll move the resolution approving the issuance, authorizing the forms, and executing authorizing lease financing, and approving the taking of all necessary actions in connection herewith.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, done. Next, County Manager, this is a Measure A report backs A is early learning and care.
Mr. President, members of the Board, this item has been discussed with the Board in the past. There has been great progress that has been made on behalf of the Committee that has worked for well over a year now on this issue. Supervisor Groom has really spearheaded this effort, and I believe will give this report. I also want to thank Superintendent Campbell and also Erica Woods and the Silicon Valley Foundation, who have contributed greatly to the progress we've made so far.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Malphy, and thank you, Mr. President. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council. My colleagues, Ann Campbell and Erica Wood, are in the front row, and we have spent several years working to come up with a plan that will help our communities be more successful. The facts are clear that 42% of our third graders are not reading proficiently. It matters because before third-grade children learn to read, after third grade, they learn to read. Those who don't read well tend to stay behind. 88% of dropouts could not read proficiently at the third-grade level. This is a systems problem that needs a system solution. Our children are not arriving at first grade ready to learn. We're not, there's no blame, there's no finger pointing here, it's just a... We're not, there's no blame, there's no finger pointing here, it's just a fact that kids are not getting to first grade ready to learn. We believe that two years of quality preschool for all, for all three and four-year-olds can change that. All-day kindergarten, currently optional, should be standard. We were very surprised to learn that kindergarten was not even mandatory, and so we think that we need to make those changes at the state level. We need more facilities, we need better facilities, we need better and more training for all of our, for all of the people that are going to be involved in preschool. To fully address the need for quality early education, including summer programs, we will need about $40 million annually, $10 million annually for summer programs. So this investment in early learning is happening all over the United States. Utah, North Carolina, Georgia, New Jersey, our own neighbor to the north, San Francisco. Redwood City School District at one time had a preschool-for-all program. Oakland has just announced that they intend to undergo the same kind of issues, the same kind of program that we're about, that we're embarking on today. With this investment from San Mateo County, the PPLC, the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council, will have a comprehensive plan in place by the end of the year, and a strategic advisory committee will be formed. We have many leaders, some in this room, who have already enlisted. An advocacy and outreach committee will be formed. We'll also be able to use this investment to able to leverage more dollars from foundations, from grants, and from new innovative mechanisms such as, such as social impact bonding. So we think that this investment from the county gives us the opportunity to really go out to the rest of the community, other, to the rest of the United States, to, to help us reinvest this. There, I know there are a number of speakers today who want to join in, but I'd like to just close by saying that this is about the future of our kids. This is about the future of San Mateo County. We want every child in our county to have an excellent education, to be ready for post-high school programs, whether it's college, whether it's community college, whether it's apprentice programs. We want them to have the skills to find good jobs. We want the children in our schools today to be able to stay in San Mateo County, to work here, to become entrepreneurs, to become teachers, to become business owners, to become really productive members of our community. We want this so that we can continue the can-do spirit of San Mateo County. We want our kids to be successful, we want our children to be successful, and to do that, they have to be prepared to learn. And so that's the crux of what we're proposing and have been proposing and are now, with this funding, ready to embark on a, on a new, new challenge for the rest of us. So thank you to my colleagues. When you make this recommendation to move forward to September, thank you to the staff. And now, Mr. President, I believe we have some speakers.
We, we have a few, quite a few speakers. Any questions before I take the speakers? Okay, first Carrie LaBelle, followed by Ann Campbell.
Thank you very much, and thank you Supervisor Groom for your outstanding leadership on this issue. Thanks to Superintendent Campbell and to Erica Wood. I think this is an unprecedented coming together of public and private organizations throughout our county, because the need that we face as a county is very great, and the consequences for a populace without this program long-term are also very great. These are the numbers of zero to three services on the south coast in the La Honda-Pescadero Unified School District, zero. There are no zero to three services in Pescadero, apart from those provided by Puente and limited home visits to 11 very low-income children supported through the Institute for Human and Social Development. There are no childcare centers, there are no licensed providers, nearly all children live in shared or barracks housing, most are dual-language learners, most very low socioeconomic status, most stay with kind but untrained providers. We're fortunate to have one-half-day preschool in our school district, and yet, most children already lag behind by their first day of preschool. In fact, we need kickoff to preschool programs, just to help youth get ready before school even begins. This unreadiness continues onto kindergarten. We're fortunate in our district that we have excellent all-day kindergarten, but the results by third grade are clear. Children cannot read in English or Spanish, and we see at Puente's Youth Employment Program 43 this summer that many of our youth, products of our school district, cannot adequately read or write in any language. Proposal before you is critical, thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Ann Campbell, followed by Jeannie McLaughlin?
Good morning, President Horstley, members of the board, and Messrs. Holland, Malphy, and Byers. I'm privileged to be here today to speak on behalf of Supervisor Groom's proposal to allocate Measure A funds on behalf of our zero-to-five population. They're a group that can't advocate on their behalf, so it's been wonderful to have Supervisor Groom's championing of this effort. This morning, I'm here on behalf of the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council, as well as San Mateo County's 23 school districts, in urging you to set aside the requested allocation from Measure A funds so that we can get to work expanding and improving our existing preschool programs and developing new spaces and programs for our county's three- and four-year-olds. I actually come here today wearing two hats. One hat is my hat as an educator. As I've studied, researched, and learned about the amazing brain development that occurs between a child's entry into the world at birth and a child's entry into kindergarten five years later, I've become more and more convinced of the profound impact that participating in two years of quality preschool can have on a child's school readiness and on a child's academic trajectory as he or she moves through school. When I take off my educator's hat and put on my taxpayer's hat, I also believe that providing quality preschool to three- and four-year-olds just plain makes good economic sense. It's a great investment, and it saves us money in the long run. A variety of longitudinal studies show that participating in two years of quality preschool dramatically reduces the need for intensive social services later in life. Economists estimate that every dollar invested in quality preschool returns many dollars more in terms of an individual's enhanced lifetime earning potential, ability to pay taxes, and lack of need of support services. So thanks very much for the chance to be here today. With both of those hats, I urge you to support allocating Measure A funds on behalf of our youngest children. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Campbell. Jeannie McLaughlin, followed by Erica Wood?
Good morning, President Horstley, honorable members of the board, Mr. Malphy, Holland, and Byers. My name is Jeannie McLaughlin. I am the Director of Early Learning Support Services at the County Office of Education and was formerly the Director of our county's Preschool For All Demonstration Grant from 2004 to 2009. First, I want to thank you for the vote today to utilize Measure A funds to seed investments in high-quality, early-learning opportunities for three- and four-year-olds most in need of access to preschool. This is an investment in the future of San Mateo County's children, their success, and ultimately, a better community for us all. But because we want to know that investments of this kind are designed to and ultimately do achieve what we had hoped, I want to share with you a little bit about the success of our previous Preschool For All Demonstration Grant. The service area of that project included the Redwood City School District. There it is again. In partnership with the district, the county office and First Five, we have had the John W. Gardner Center at Stanford University conduct a longitudinal study of the academic outcomes of over 700 children in the Redwood City School District who attended the PFA classrooms. The study followed three cohorts of graduates into the first and second grades. This coming year, we'll look at three, grades three and four. After adjusting for differences in student characteristics, researchers found that children who participated in preschool for all matched or outperformed their peers in five report-card subjects, math, listening, speaking, reading, writing, work-study skills, as well as on standardized tests in math and English language arts. The program targeted three- and four-year-olds who have traditionally lacked access to preschool, students who are low-income, Latino, English-language learners, and whose parents had not graduated high school. It was delivered in classrooms and by teachers that met very specific criteria for high-quality and are higher quality than are typically found in preschool programs. We learned that dosage matters, we learned that quality matters, we learned that it leveled the playing field, and that really, we closed the gap, and that's the holy grail. So I thank you very much-
Thanks, Jeannie.
-and appreciate your time.
Erica Wood, followed by Michael Garp?
Good morning, President Horstley, members of the board, Mr. Malphy, Mr. Holland, and Mr. Byers. I'm pleased to have an opportunity to say a few words on behalf of this agenda topic representing the PPLC. As you know, we've launched an effort to significantly improve early learning and care in the county, and we're calling it the Big Lift. And I would remind everyone in the room that one of the early successes of the PPLC was a Bill of Rights for children and youth that was widely adopted in the county and later throughout the state. And one of those rights was that all children and youth have access to a 21st-century education, which we believe begins with high-quality preschool. There's energy behind the Big Lift, and you all should know that. We had a convening on May 31st to launch it, and has been said about any great cause, the side with the most energy prevails, and the PPLC will have the most energy on this issue. The Community Foundation as well is going to bring energy to this issue, and I want you to know why. We see it as very closely aligned with our organizational mission, which is about addressing the most challenging problems. And the fact that 42%, almost 50% of our kids can't read proficiently by third grade is a challenging problem. It's actually a crisis, and a crisis that's going to take more than incremental change to solve. It's going to take a systems response, which will require big commitments, big change, and a big lift. So it's important that you know, as an institution working through the PPLC, we stand ready to bring our influence and our support to the effort. And I'd like to thank Supervisor Groom for her leadership and for members of the board for considering allocating Measure A funds to this effort. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Michael Garp, followed by Cheryl Young?
Good morning. Having spent over 30 years in San Mateo County improving the lives of our children, I am here this morning to support the recommendation before you to provide funding for preschool for three- and four-year-olds. This is a monumental opportunity to improve the lives of so many children in our community by providing preschool for all. Researchers at Stanford University recently found that the most of the achievement gap between children from rich and poor families occurs during the preschool years and grows by only 10 percentage points during, points between the kindergarten and 12th grade. We have local data that supports the findings at Stanford, our preschool initiative, and the Redwood City Schools funded by First Five and the County Office of Education that ended in June of 2009. In the past, we have looked at high-school dropouts and wondering why so many fail to succeed. We need to change our focus to when they are much younger and before they start kindergarten. President Obama addressed the need to expand early childhood education in the state of his Union address, and just last week, Hillary Clinton, at the Clinton Initiative America Conference, spoke of her new partnership, Too Small to Fail. This is no small initiative. It will not be an easy task. The Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council, of which I am a member, has worked diligently to develop this initiative. Much more work will be required to put in place the mechanism to carry it out. This is just the beginning of a movement that could make San Mateo County a leader in the state and possibly the nation. No one here wishes for our children to fail, so let's put our efforts into them succeeding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garp. Cheryl Young, followed by Lorne Needle?
Good morning. Well, the theme today is certainly seems to be it's all about the kids, and I'm here to talk about the importance of early learning for children with special needs and disabilities. Today, children with special needs and disabilities comprise of anywhere between 10% to 20% of our children, and as you know, the diagnosis of autism and has continues to, to grow in the numbers. One in 50 children today in our schools are diagnosed on the, on the spectrum. We know, there's evidence-based practices now that tell us that inclusive preschools have enormous benefits for our children and our families. First of all, our children with special needs improve their cognitive and their motor skills, they have higher levels of social skills and playing, and they learn through modeling with other kids. When they're in programs with kids with typically developing children, they learn from other kids. We know that typically developing children learned how to better accept differences and tolerance for differences, and that they also become more aware of others and develop more helping skills. We know that families who have children with special needs, when they're in inclusive preschools, they feel less isolated. You know, we know that a lot of kids with special needs need programs with modifications because many of them have missed school. They've been at medical appointments and have been ill, they've missed a lot of the learning. We also know that some of them will have some behavioral problems or learning differences because the brain is still developing. And so we know that a lot of times, at those early ages, that they'll have difficulties with language development, comprehension, grasping, abstraction, but we know how to work with that and to help kids so that they can learn through physical adaptations or materials. Why we haven't done a better job is because we haven't had the systems in place, we haven't had the teacher training, or we haven't had affordable childcare. So I fully support this and look forward to working with this measure.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Lorne Needle, followed by Ann Torres?
Good morning, President Horstley, and members of the board, and County Manager Malphy and staff. I want to just pick up where Cheryl left off. You've heard from our leaders in the county about the need and about the solutions, and that's not the hard part. The hard part is getting what we've called the Big Lift. This is one of those problems that we seem to find ourselves in where, as a system, we have to do this right, as a system, we have this, do this better. We have all the parts, we have fantastic leaders, and it's going to take your leadership and our leadership and everybody's to come together and change some things and make some investments and, and do some work. And the good news from my perspective and from United Way's perspective is that we know it's possible. United Ways around the country for decades have been involved in early learning and things like Success by Six and Born Learning and seeing the results. We have evidence that you heard from San Mateo County about, we know we can do that here, and so it's a matter of all of us getting together. And for our United Way, our focus is on cutting poverty, and we all know the importance of education, starting with early childhood learning, in cutting poverty. So for us, this is really important. We are really privileged to be a member of the council and of this team, and we have been for years, and we will continue to be. We have funded the council's work, and we will continue to do that, and we ask for your involvement and your support and your leadership to support this proposal. Thank you very much.
Ann Torres, followed by Sharon Dolan?
Good morning, members of the board of supervisors. My name is Ann Torres. I'm the Child Development and Education Director for Peninsula Family Service. We serve over 450 children from, from Daly City to Menlo Park in child development centers. Four of our, our centers are located in four of the districts that are focused here. We support this funding in order for us to continue our services, to have our children ready to learn. The majority of our children are children from low-income families that really need the support from the members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Sharon Dolan, followed by Pat Baum?
Good morning. I'm Sharon Dolan. I'm the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of North San Mateo County. I'd like to thank Supervisor Groom for her leadership on this issue, as well as the two of you. Thank you. We've been a member of the PPLC as well, which, as you know, is focused on helping all children learn to read by third grade, read on, at grade level by third grade. Many of you were either at the convening, the Big Lift, or had representatives there. We appreciated that, and we appreciate your leadership. As you've been hearing this morning, there is enormous impact by having preschool available for three- and four-year-olds, and, and an enormous negative impact by not having that available. And at the Boys and Girls Club, we don't start seeing kids until they're six years old, so we're not a preschool provider- old, so we're not a preschool provider. But I want to say that we full-heartedly support this issue. When kids arrive to us, we see the difference between the kids who have been able to go to preschool and the kids who have not been able to preschool, to go to preschool. Some of them are ready to learn, some of them are not ready to learn, and it's very clear who is who. And it's, reading is the key point, but it is much bigger than that. The kids who have been to preschool are more ready to make friends, take risks, try new things, and all kinds of different things that have a long-term impact on their lives and subsequently on our lives and on the county as a whole. We, as an after-school program, we can do something to make up for the lost time in preschool. There's a lot that we can do that's significant, but imagine if we could start with kids who have arrived on a level playing field and all of whom had been able to have access to quality preschool. There is so much more that could be done by after-school and other kinds of programs that don't serve preschoolers. So we appreciate your support to this state and look forward to continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Baum, followed by Alyssa McAvoy.
Good morning, Mr. Byers, Mr. Malp, and Mr. Holland, President and Board. I'm Pat Baum, Executive Director of the Daly City Peninsula Partnership Collaborative. I want to thank you first for addressing the need for high-quality preschool in Daly City and North County. Ann Torres, one of my partners from Peninsula Family Service, would probably tell you that there is over 800 low-income families waiting for the 200 slots at Bay Shore Childcare. So the need is great, and even greater throughout the rest of the county as well. As many of you know, Daly City Partnership's premier mission, since its inception about 18 years ago, is to see students achieve grade-level literacy. And our Early Childhood Resource Center, our second home up on the JFK campus, we serve over 800 families and providers with parenting and teaching skills, and we hope that you will consider supporting the professional development of both new and current early childhood educators as part of either this initiative or in addition to, in order to keep the quality of care and education at its highest level. I also want to thank Mr. Malp and the board for exploring Measure A supports for after-school extended learning opportunities. Daly City Partnership has been the recipient of HSA Intervention and Prevention Funds to support our after-school tutoring programs and interventions, but due to county and state budget constraints, we have been operating at a 60% reduction. We would love to have a conversation about restoring partial funding to meet the demands for after-school literacy tutoring at the elementary school level as well as the middle school level. Middle school level, we had a very robust program for the last two years. As you know, federal 21st century grant funds have virtually disappeared in the county. We lost those funds, so we've trickled down to a very minimum program, and restoring funding for the middle school level would also help us build that program back up and address the need that we see with students from the middle school level entering high school at sixth-grade reading level, about 40% to 60%. So thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Alyssa McAvoy, followed by Pastor Paul Baines.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you once, thank you once again for your leadership on this issue. Today, I'm actually representing the San Mateo County School Boards Association. I'm the new president for this next year, and I'm looking forward to working with you on all of this. And I just want to put in our support from all the school board trustees in San Mateo County that we would like to see Measure A funds used for early childhood learning and care. And after having worked on all of this for so many years, I'm convinced that the only way to close the achievement gap is if we do have high-quality, zero-to-five, learning and care for all of our children in the county. So I look forward to working with you on all of this. Thank you very much for your support.
Just a quick question, Alyssa.
Oh, sorry.
Didn't you relabel the elementary school district in Redwood City to cover preschool through eight?
We did. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, pre-K through eighth grade, and we have a lot of research in our particular school district, of which many of it was mentioned today, but we also have some additional research out of the Sabrato organization that's been working for us for years. And it is amazing to see how you close the achievement gap is high-quality preschool. In addition, high-quality, really zero-to-five is what we're talking about. And as we know, 90% of the brain develops in those first five years, so it's really, really important for those kids to get high quality. But thank you, yeah, pre-K through eighth grade, Redwood City. Thank you.
Pastor Paul Baines, followed by Kristin Anderson.
Supervisors, President Horsley, and supervisors, and Malp and staff, thank you for this opportunity. Although Supervisor Pine, she gave me an extra 60 seconds, you asked her a question. I'm a preacher, I need more time. East Palo Alto and the whole county of San Mateo, but I'm just saying East Palo Alto as an example. We have a, or had a 70% non-graduation rate out of high school. There's a saying that "high tide makes many bolts float," and I know that these supervisors here are sensitive to the needs of our community. You've proven it time and time again. I'm writing my strong support, the request. I'm gonna read this. "To appropriate Measure A funding of $5 million," I'm gonna put a number to it, "for the 2013, 2014, and an additional $5 million for the 2014 and '15 recommended budget to establish the San Mateo County Early Learning and Care Trust Fund. You all have did this leadership for land in the past and have did a fabulous job. And so now it's time to do it for the educational center. This funding is to begin to move forward towards providing quality preschool for the county three- and four-year-olds who currently qualify but lack access. Our intent is to raise third-grade reading proficiency from 58% of the county's children to 80% by the year 2020. This funding is critical as we flesh out a robust plan for rolling out the initiative and will provide leverage for raising matching funds through the private sector. I believe that this is critical, that the county begins preparing our children to succeed in kindergarten and read proficiently by third grade as soon as possible. I would appreciate, on behalf of some of the others, your support in this endeavor. Thank you."
Thanks, Paul. Kristin Anderson, followed by Karen Haas Foletta.
I'm Kristin Anderson, the Redwood City Childcare Coordinator. I encourage you to support this recommendation, and I would second a number of the points that other people have made today. I think it's a particularly innovative proposal that includes the condition that matching funds be raised because that brings others to the table. I think it's going to require all hands on deck for this plan to be carried out successfully, and coming from a city that has been active in the childcare and early education planning and working with our school district for over 25 years. I think we need to look for a role for cities to play in this, as well as the business sector. A couple of other points, I think we need to be careful to ensure that some of these preschool spaces are full-day spaces to enable children of working parents to attend these The children that will be served are low-income. Their families need to be able to work to not be living in poverty, which results in the lack of opportunities for the children. The other issue I'd like to mention is the need to address facilities in our county. I can speak from working with providers who are looking for space for the past many, many years in our community, and know very qualified people who have tried to find facilities to open new preschools, and four of them are currently running family childcare homes. They're qualified as directors, but they can't find a place to serve more than 12 children. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Haas Foletta, okay, and followed by Marcia Chavez.
Hi, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am Karen Haas Foletta. I'm the Executive Director of Footsteps Childcare. I'm also a board member for the Childcare Coordinating Council. And Footsteps Childcare has been running for 19 years. We used to be called Cipriani After School Care. We have, most of our locations are in Belmont and Reva Shores, but we opened a new preschool last year in Redwood City downtown at City Center Plaza. And I support everything everybody said today. The work has been tremendous. I also support what Kristin just said about full daycare. I see that in all my locations. We have state preschool in the morning that parents need all day. They need to work, they need to be able to provide for their families, and I've seen a great difference in Redwood City. In the first year, we got many children who had never been to preschool before. It's been very challenging, but after a year, literally over a year, I can see the results, and I can also see the difference of the children who started at four with us and those who have started at three. So I greatly support the two-year program, and thank everybody very much for offering this for our community. Thank you.
Marcia Chavez.
Hello, good morning, board. My name is Marcia Chavez. I'm the Program Director at Redwood City School District Preschool Programs. I'm new in the position, but I'm very grateful to be here today. I've been working in the field for 20 years, both at school age and in preschool, and I just know, as a Program Director running our programs, how vital and instrumental it is to have quality preschool in our county, particularly in Redwood City. As of now, we have almost 200 families on our waiting list to be in either our part-day or full-day programs. Our full-day programs went from nine to six and now four, and we have families daily just coming in wanting quality preschool. This measure will definitely improve the quality and the outlook of children in our county, particularly children three to four. And in Redwood City, we serve a very low-income disadvantaged community, children that need quality care. And Redwood City is the forefront when it comes to that. When we had preschool for all, currently we're doing the SEAL, which is the Sabrato Early Academic Learning Program, and it's very successful and a model program in Redwood City. In addition, we've just added on our pre-K STEM math program through San Mateo County Office of Education. So it's very vital to have quality preschool in our programs, and I highly encourage you to support this measure so that we can have this throughout San Mateo County and that we could be the forefront when it comes to early education. Thank you.
Is there one more speaker on this same? Lori Wishard.
I'm Lori Wishard with the Childcare Coordinating Council, and I want to express the support of our Board of Directors for Measure A. I also want to express the support of the two Family Childcare Provider Associations. Quality childcare in this community is provided in a variety of different locations and will be, and Family Childcare is one of those locations, and those providers heartily support use of Measure A funds for childcare.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, this is now a recommendation to appropriate Measure A funding and to establish the San Mateo County Early Learning Care Trust Fund. Any questions, comments? Supervisor Pine?
Thank you. So earlier, there was a reference to a happy blog. I would certainly make a posting on that at this moment. This is a really exciting time for San Mateo County. The efforts of the PPLC here really have been extraordinary, do become a real force for change for our children. So my deep thanks to my colleague Supervisor Groom, Ann Campbell, and Erica Woods for shepherding this into the place that it is today. We've heard at length about how critical this strategy is, and, you know, to my mind, it really stands alone in its importance. This achievement gap that kids have when they enter kindergarten is very real and extraordinarily difficult for schools to remedy. So we're going to give these kids a chance. We've got to make this investment. We've got to invest in zero-to-five, and we ought to invest in preschool. This is a hard road ahead in terms of coming up with the funding to do this, and I think we're making a great start today. But it will take a sustained commitment by all the partners, a sustained commitment by the county, for sure. We've seen in the past a fantastic success in the Redwood City School District with their preschool program, but unfortunately, that only lasted for two or three years and the funding went away, and we lost that momentum. So, you know, this time, we have to kind of collectively commit to make this a sustained I would support this funding whether we had Measure A or not. I mean, to me, it's of such magnitude that, you know, it should take priority even if it require cuts in other areas. You know, our job as supervisors is to set priorities, and for me, this is a very high priority. So again, I really thank the leadership and the multi-years of work that have been done to get to this stage. I had three questions. I'm not sure who best to address them to, but maybe just ask here. You know, earlier in the year, we had deep concerns about Governor Brown's reductions in funding for childcare slots, and there was some fear that some of our programs in the county were sufficiently financially vulnerable that these cuts could force them to close. So I wondered if anyone had an update about what the Brown budget has, what the Brown budget funds, you know, how the funding looks currently, or whether we are considering any emergency bridge funding for any of these programs.
Through Supervisor Horsley, through Supervisor Pine. We're still studying the budget, obviously, it was just adopted. We think that a number of those cutbacks, or some of those cutbacks, I should say, have been ameliorated to some degree. There still may be some, but we think most of the critical slots for those in county programs have probably been preserved, or we have enough money to cobble together to keep them active.
Yeah, that's great to hear. I mean, it was very, you know, concerning, you know, Brown's cuts in this area over the last couple of years have really put us behind the eight ball. You know, secondly, there was also some work, I know, done by the county to explore trying to provide more flexibility in the funds that we do receive from the state. Has anyone, when you look into this, there's a whole spaghetti network of funding that comes down to the county. And, you know, one of the great ideas was, well, if we had more flexibility with these funds, maybe that would help us achieve this funding nut. So is there any update on those efforts?
To my knowledge, that's still being discussed, but I don't see anything in the budget that would lead me to believe that that's been implemented yet.
We did, and our county council did a number of, a lot of work on the chart that was created, and most of what county council determined was that they were embedded deeply in state statute, and it would take Herculean task to unbed those. So that's one of the reasons I think that our group just decided to forge ahead.
And then finally, you know, as I understand it, this next year, this next fiscal year, there'll be a lot of energy spent on planning.
The next six months.
And, you know, finding other partners, figuring out where to roll things out in the following year. So, you know, if we end up using less than this $5 million in 2013, 2014, will we just roll that forward? That would be my preference. Okay. All right, those are my questions again. This is a very important milestone for the county. Thank you.
Supervisor Adrienne Tessier.
Just a couple of quick comments. First, I want to thank Carol and the committee. I think you've done, all of you, Erica, Superintendent Campbell, you know, this takes a lot of work, and, you know, you are building the foundation for a really strong community. And I think the only, you know, we've prided ourselves at this board to look at prevention, early intervention, when it comes to healthcare needs, mental health needs, all these things. But at the end of the day, that's all well and good, but if these children can't read, they can't write by third grade, you know, we've lost that foundation. So I really commend you, and I think, you know, you call it the big lift, you've done the heavy lifting, and the big lift is the rest of us in the community that have to help make this happen. So I do hope that those that are listening will be good community partners out there. Um, you know, at the end of the day, it really does take money, it takes the lift, but it also takes the money to put it together to implement this. So I do hope that we can come up with some other community resources to match this significantly so that this won't be just an interim program, but this will be long-term, because I really believe that if the foundation crumbles, so goes the community. So I give you all credit, and I too support it.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I too agree that this is a high priority item, I was just had a quick question maybe for the county manager or for Supervisor Groom. Um, I understand that there's a plan coming back from the county superintendent of schools, and I'm curious, the, the timing on that and how that might or might not relate to the budget hearings in September. In other words, does the plan have to come back before the September hearings in order for us to finalize all Measure A recommendations, or could it come after?
We don't believe so, Supervisor Slocum, we really are gonna spend the next six months working on this, and we'll have, um, we hope, a firm work plan and a, a number of people who have, some who have already signed up, and a number of people who will work on the various commu- committees that we want to establish. And, uh, we, we will present, at some point, we will present that plan to you, but that's our next task.
Uh, through Supervisor Horstley, I, I would concur, there, there are really two major, um, hurdles past the plan. One is obviously the, the overall funding, uh, for the program, which is, uh, a, a large amount of money, and, and, and that will be part of the plan. And, and the other, i- in terms of just developing the capacity, uh, there are a lot of kids out there that, that aren't in, um, uh, good childcare situations, and we just need time to, to make sure that the capacity is there, even if the money is there, to, to, to match the need with the, with the capacity of childcare. So those, both of those things have to come together, and it's gonna take some time. Uh, I think this is a good placeholder. Uh, if it's not spent, as I said, my recommendation back to the board will be that it be rolled into the future year funding. Um, and I think that's what, the best we could say at this point in time.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, you know, I, when I was on the first five commission, there was, uh, a video from, it was a Dr. Hackman, who's actually, uh, was an economist, not a social worker at all, but, but he said was that for every dollar you spend on early childhood education, you get back seven dollars, or maybe it was seventeen, but it was some very astronomical number. And it's results in fewer high school dropouts, more college-educated pe- students, um, certainly that helps your economy. And the thing that was most important is it reduces crime, and that reduces cost in the long run, so. And I'd also say, you, the comment you just made, Supervisor Groom, about forge ahead, I admire your courage and your determination, you take on big challenges, and, uh, if I was ever gonna try and run through a wall, I'd want you to go with me.
But you go first.
Of course you go first. Uh, I think we all very supportive of this and really congratulate the entire team for putting this, this is a great, uh, plan.
This whole room, this whole room.
Really great. Okay, so do we give, should we make a resolution to, or does it require that, or just, uh?
We're taking a minute action directing this, be included in the.
Okay, so that, that's what we'll do, that's done? We don't, doesn't require any kind of?
I'll make the motion that we move this forward for the budget.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resoundingly, okay. The next, uh, don't all leave.
They gotta start raising money.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, uh, next is six B, that's a library summer reading programs.
Mr. President, members of the board, uh, before we begin this item, um, there's a related, um, project called the Little Library, which is essentially a, um, a kiosk or bookshelf in which, um, there's a shared book program for children's books, in which people can borrow and, and return the books, uh, and people that, um, are so inclined could add to the bookshelf, um, uh, with, with new or used books. Um, our county is participating in this pilot project, and outside, uh, in the anteroom outside the board chambers is our county's, um, Little Library. Uh, it will be, uh, permanently installed in our courtyard between, um, four hundred and four-five-five, uh, and I wanted to thank, um, some folks in our Public Works Maintenance and Operations section that were involved in taking this project on force. With the oversight of Gary Behrens, it was designed by Phil Crenn and Patrick Oliver, and the construction team of, uh, Phil Crenn and Chuck Weems, and I think they're here? They're back there. Thanks, guys. So if you get a chance, uh, get, go out and, and take a look at it, I think it's a, it's a great, um, example of what can be done at basically very little or no cost, that really makes a tremendous difference in, uh, children's lives, the, the, I'm often struck, um, uh, when I go out on occasion and, and, um, visit a home, uh, at the number of, um, homes that there are no books, or very few books, uh, that children will have access to, and when I think of my children when they were growing up, and I suspect, um, many of the, of the, the rest of those in this room, um, our homes were filled with books, and, and how important that was in getting us off to the right start in life. So this is maybe a way to compensate for that in those situations. And, uh, certainly related to that is the importance of children reading, and what has been known for some time in educational circles as the, the loss in reading, uh, in, in, uh, the summertime, uh, between, uh, school terms. Um, I know, in my case, um, I didn't spend, uh, a lot of time reading, um, between June and September.
Playing golf, perhaps?
Uh, there were other activities that, that took precedence, and I was probably the worst for that, but, um, one of the ways to compensate for that is in summer reading programs, and the, the Peninsula Library System has, um, partnered, um, this program for a number of years, and with some additional funding, uh, we believe we could basically triple the number of children that, uh, are enrolled and succeed in the program, and that means that many more children that start off the new school term, uh, that much more ahead and ready to, uh, come to school the next year, ready to learn and comprehend, um, in school. So our recommendation in this particular, um, report is, um, two hundred, or three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in fiscal year fourteen, and two hundred and six thousand dollars in fifteen, uh, for the summer reading program in partnership, uh, with, uh, libraries.
Okay. Uh, we have a couple, two speakers, Maryad, are you speaking on this? No, okay, so it's, uh, two speakers, Valerie Summer, followed by Linda Crowe.
Good morning, President Horstley, Vice President Pine, board members, staff. I'm Valerie Summer, Library Director, City of South San Francisco, and I'm very happy here to stand up and talk about summer reading programs in libraries, and I urge you to support this item for funding the summer reading programs. Our libraries provide exciting and creative reading programs, enhancement and enrichment programs with the goal of creating lifelong learners. A personal mission of mine has always been to spread the joy of learning. Ever since South San Francisco participated in the Peninsula Partnership, literacy by third grade has been a passion. We see the summer gap in learning as an opportunity to really spread that love of learning and to maintain the reading skills and promote that joy of learning in, and reading in our communities. Many of us have so many different vibrant programs during the summer, um, one of which is, is tutoring. Um, a couple of the libraries match the older children with the younger children, mostly to spread the joy of reading and use as a bridge for those kids, the reluctant readers, to join the summer reading programs. I've been particularly excited about the big lift, I had some council members who did attend the, um, workshop recently. Afterwards, we all met with the school district and talked about, again, literacy by third grade, and I have to tell you that my, my newest favorite talking points is, is children learn to read by third grade and then read to learn after third grade, and it really makes an impact. We have some STEM funding and STEM programs in South San Francisco, and we just, we see how important it is for the kids to be up at or beyond reading level in order to move on through and into a career and succeed in life. So I want to thank you for considering this, and please support it, libraries and reading make a difference to our kids.
Thanks. Linda Crowe?
Thank you so much, Board of Supervisors, President of the Board, Mr. Horstley, and staff. Peninsula Library System, I think by now you all know is a collaborative of all the public libraries in the community, college libraries in the county, and they are fully committed to supporting this program. Summer reading is fun, we always used to think of it as fun, but it's so much more. It keeps children engaged all year long in reading and learning and having, we hope, uh, a good time. And actually, um, Mr. Malpe, there are some summer reading programs for adults who miss them when they were, when they were kids. I want to say that this program will give us an opportunity to redesign the approach to summer reading and include online, um, programs for, with it too. Um, we think we can really make it an exciting opportunity for children in the county, and PLS will be a cost-effective partner and deliver the services and produce the metrics and deliverables for the future. So, um, we're very pleased that you're interested in this program, because we've been interested in it for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Is this, uh, reading a book in between golf games in Hawaii or something?
Graphic novels.
Supervisor Koom, would you like to make the recommendation to move this?
I would love to, I would love this, to make this recommendation. Um, as a, as a young kid growing up in Oakland, the Melrose Library was my best friend, and I was in every summer reading program they had, which is why I'm probably a lousy golfer. But I would love to move this on to our September, uh, decision time.
And I'll second that, and also, that might be a good suggestion, what we get John for either Christmas or his birthday.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Just a, one question, a related question if I may.
Sure.
Um, you know, another, th- this is a great, this is, you know, I'm very pleased we're going forward, forward with this, I mean, I too remember all the smartest kids were always spending a lot of time in the library, reading, um, pays off. But I, can you refresh my memory on whether we are going to be considering any additional efforts in, uh, homework centers, after-school homework, uh, efforts?
Uh, at this time, I'm, I'm not aware of any, there may be one report back that comes, uh, is coming back in late July, I think, regarding homework centers, um, but I think our primary emphasis is on the summer reading programs and, eh, at this point in time.
Okay. Okay. Uh, the next item is six C, it's the County Fire Vehicle Replacement Fund, Mr. Malpe?
Mr. President, members of the board, this is our final Measure A report back this morning. We're recommending over the course of two years, three point five million dollars be, uh, placed into a fund to, um, uh, begin the replacement of, uh, fire vehicles for both the, um, professional and volunteer, um, fire, uh, units within the unincorporated area of the county. Um, we have, uh, a number of vehicles in the fleet that are over, uh, sixteen years old, uh, in fact, some of the tenders, um, are getting up to thirty years old. Uh, we just simply, this has been one of those deferred maintenance, uh, items that we have not been able to address. Uh, we think this would be a good, uh, use of Measure A funds and would recommend, uh, you moving this forward to your September budget.
Okay, any questions?
Good plan. I'll move that, we move that forward as well.
Well, before we, okay, well.
I'm sorry, I was a speaker, I'm sorry.
There is something, actually, what I do want to meet with the county manager at some later point, because there are, we have cut a number of positions out of fire service, uh, and I've talked to both the chief as well as Justin Chief, who actually has a speaker card here, and there are three, three and a half positions actually, one is an ALS coordinator, which is, it's actually a battalion chief who does the, the advanced life support, uh, working with the ambulance service and all of the, uh, the engines, and then a training captain, because I, I think it's really incredibly, incredibly important that the, uh, we make sure that all of our firefighters, their training is up to date. The last is a mechanic, essentially, they don't have a mechanic now to, uh, work on their engines, their engines and trucks. Uh, the other thing is that we, I don't think we should have our fire chief doing secretarial wor- secretarial work, and I know I've talked to Scott back there, so I'd like to ask that we also stay at least giving him some office support. So at some point, uh, I'd like to meet with your office as well as the fire chief to talk about that. In the meantime, oh, you want me, yes?
Yeah, just to add a, add a comment, um, you know, I, in my mind, in many, I often compare the fire service to the parks, I mean, I think they're in both areas that, you know, over the years have, you know, suffered during har- hard times, and, I mean, now in a position to, to kind of strengthen them both. I think it'd be, it would be helpful on the, on the facility side, the memo is pretty clear about the allocation in the next two years, and then this committee will bring forward a plan for kind of the rest of the, the rest of the needs, and I think you said we would see that, uh, you know, back in September. So I think it'd be helpful for the board to see, you know, kind of see the plan, the staffing plan, you know, going forward, um, for the next, you, you, the complete plan for, for fire, you know, not just the, the current, the next fiscal year, but, you know, what's, so, what's our gonna, what's our long-range staffing plan for fire, and just kind of look at it as a whole, just the way, just in the way we're going, we're looking at, at the facilities as a whole.
Uh, through President Horstley, we, we could certainly do that, um, uh, and we'll do so for, uh, September. One of the problems, um, with respect to fire protection in the unincorporated area is that there is a separate fund, and the fund really, uh, apart from the fiscal difficulties that, uh, the economy has experienced in the last few years, uh, has a structural deficit in it as a result of, uh, being heavily dependent on unsecured property taxes from the airport, which is in the unincorporated area, uh, which really funds a good chunk of fire protection in the unincorporated, uh, portion of the county. Uh, and so then it becomes really a political and a, and a philosophical question the board has to deal with. Um, all of the cities in the county pay for their own fire protection. Um, the fire protection for the unincorporated area is paid for by a fund that essentially, um, it comes from unincorporated area revenues, and do we want to supplement that with essentially revenues that come from cities? So that, uh, the question becomes to you, would city taxpayers in essence be paying twice for fire protection, once for, uh, city fire protection and once for fire protection in the unincorporated area? That's a political question the board has to address.
Supervisor Tessier?
Uh, just a cou- couple quick comments on some of these positions, and it, it obviously would be good to have a plan come back so we can see where we stand in all this to make those kind of decisions. But I would like to also see that we sort of leverage some of these funds, you know, the city fire departments do a tremendous amount of training, I would hope that they could maybe do some of that jointly, so we don't, you know, the fact they don't have a training officer, but there are training officers in the county, I don't know if that works, uh, but I do think, you know, instead of continuing to add positions where some of this already takes place, perhaps they can fit themselves in with some of that training. But anyway, I just think with all of this, as, as John mentioned, you know, we have to make that determination as to where those dollars come from, and I think if we can leverage some of the dollars with what's going on in some of the cities, maybe in many of these areas, perhaps that would be worthwhile. So just something to consider as you look at a plan.
Okay. Well, Justin Chief, is the speaker?
Uh, good morning, President Horstley, members of the board. Thank you very much for having me here. Uh, I must just start by saying thank you for your continued support, your current support of, uh, county fire and the services that are offered. You guys pretty much covered everything, this year's, uh, plan is to replace a water tender, uh, which is approaching thirty years and five hundred and seventy-some thousand miles. Uh, the county fire engine, and, uh, like you stated, a volunteer engine as well, uh, and then the continued plan that you'll receive, I believe, in September. Um, there is a committee established which ranges from firefighter to engineer to captain to battalion chief, so it covers kind of the broad spectrum of the fire department and the needs that those equipment, uh, you know, will need. Um, I appreciate you bringing up the, the positions, uh, you know, we have cut, I believe it's eleven positions or ten positions, uh, you know, since fiscal year oh-two, oh-three, uh, and I know we're proposing to bring back nine eventually. Um, and this year, being the ALS coordinator and training officer, which is obviously very important, uh, the mechanic and the office staff. important, the mechanic and the office staff. I'm not sure if there's any questions for me. There is one concern that came up with regards to the stations earlier. There are three fire stations that are slated or need to be replaced: Skyland, Pescaadero, and the Highland Station. Our initial work in figuring out roughly what we were going to be asking for Measure A funds for this came to roughly $26 million for the three stations, and that's assuming $8 million for Pescaadero and Skyland, and $10 million for the Highland Station because it is a training center and houses quite a bit more equipment and personnel. So I just would like to make sure that we do use a realistic number or can plan for that.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we'll work with you at a later point, Mr. Malpe, on that.
It occurred to me that in fire tender years, I'm probably about the same age.[668.04][668.04](laughter)
You're still good to go.
Yeah.
Does anybody for a five-minute break? Can we do that?
We're almost done.
Come back a little after 11:00.
We are now on to item number seven.
It's a resolution approving fiscal year 2013-14 recommended budget submitted by the county manager, Mr. John Malpe.
This recommendation is to authorize the county to continue to spend funds past July 1st until the board adopts a formal budget for fiscal year 2013-2014 and 2014-2015. This essentially rolls over the budget that was adopted by the board last September plus any additional appropriations that have been added to the budget subsequently to that. Our recommendation is to approve the resolution that has been submitted to you for the recommended budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? Supervisor Pine?
Thanks, Mr. Malpe. Just a question on the headcount changes.
Yes.
So the...I guess the three areas where you had those most substantial increases, I just wanted to make sure I understood those. So BHRS, we're with 11, and there's seven here for school-based mental health services. Is that in connection with the upcoming Measure A discussion?
The VRS has to do with the transfer responsibilities between the WIB and VRS as a result of the reorganization. So it's really moving people from one budget unit to another.
I was referring to the...it says seven positions added for school-based mental health services. Did we talk about...did my mission?
Oh, that, yes. That's specialized. It's...the...we are not adding anything for Measure A until the board formally approves it.
Okay. So this then is...
We brought this to you. Jim, maybe you have more information on it, but...
(inaudible).
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Everything in the salary change or in the ordinance has already been approved by the board?
Right.
No, I understand that, but oftentimes with the, you know, the salary ordinances we approve, you know, each meeting, it's kind of hard to really see the big picture. Like, when it's all here, you see the big picture.
Right.
So may...again, I apologize if I...if I can't really recall exactly what these are. So I was just looking for a little...maybe to refresh my memory on this.
If you recall, we started the year last year with the school districts going out to bid.
Right.
Some school districts, I think one or two at the end of the day, ended up doing their own specialized programs. The rest came back into the county program. And during the course of the year, as further discussions took place between the school districts and the county, it was determined that we needed some additional positions in order to jointly fulfill those responsibilities, and those seven positions reflect that.
Okay. Yeah, I recall very much the trance or the discussion when we were working with the school districts and basically suggesting that they continue to use our services. And so it sounds like we've probably made more headway in that they're wanting to use quite even more. So that's good to see. And then again, again, apologies just to refresh my memory. On the HSA, of course, you have the 25 positions for the Affordable Care Act, and then we have the 10 social work positions.
That was for...it was determined that our workload was such in child protective services that we needed to fill some additional positions, and those reflect that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple, actually. Looking at this...give you an example. Planning and building, we had talked about adding some staff in our planning division, mostly because, you know, we have so many projects, both in my district as well as District Four. So I'd actually like to have a meeting with you, John.
I think you'll find those will be in the budget in September. This, again, reflects what's been done till date.
Okay. Okay, okay, okay. So I was...yeah, I was looking...I could not find them. I was looking for...there's additional money for Princeton. I didn't see that in there, but that's all in September. Okay. I...all right. Good. In that case, I have no further questions.[985.43][985.43](laughing) Can I get a motion to...
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. County managers' report?
My report today, Mr. President and members of the board, centers around what we know to date, and it still is a changing target regarding the state budget. As you know, the legislature has completed its work this past weekend. The budget is a $96.3 billion spending plan, and it represents a deal that was struck between the governor and the speaker and the president pro tem. There are at least four or five issues that represent concern to us, but about which we really don't have full understanding at this point. The first is in healthcare realignment, which I know you are aware of, and I know Supervisor Groom has been very, very involved in on the CSAC level. Basically, the governor has insisted on using realignment funding from the '91-'92 realignment for healthcare to fund the state's medical responsibilities. This means that the counties will lose approximately $300 million. Our county's realignment will decline by about $4 million in '15 and approximately $17 million in '15. And there are two options, neither of which are particularly attractive, frankly. One is a straight 60-40 split in which we would lose about $15 million in realignment. The other, worst case, is a 70...or 80-20 split in which we would lose a maximum of $17 million, but could be able to keep a small amount of so-called profits from a public hospital. I'm still trying to find a public hospital administrator that has seen a profit, but maybe the governor knows how to operate public hospitals at a profit. And if so, he's determined that he wants to keep 80% of those funds as well. So that represents a real challenge for us. The second is in the area of excess ERAF, and there are really a number of issues surrounding that that are potentially problematical to us. One is in the revenue limits of school districts, which are not calculated by the controller until later. That could affect our excess ERAF take, depending on the...how the new revenue limits for the school district shake out. Two is for vehicle licensing revenue. We estimate this year, this coming fiscal year 14, there's probably about $5 million at stake for cities and counties in that pot, but that has to be calculated after we calculate the basic aid districts. Third is in the area of special education. The governor swept that money for special education, apparently in order to give it to the courts, and then intends to backfill that with excess ERAF money so that special education would be whole, the courts would be whole, and we would have less excess ERAF. It works for most of us. The final area of some concern will continue to be the amount that, although the formula is set, that is available for the criminal justice realignment. We continue to see more prisoners in the AB 109 category that will be in our jail. That number apparently is going to continue, and those...there's not sufficient funds to reimburse those costs. So all of those areas are of concern to us, although we don't have numbers at this point. We will, obviously, by September, and have a complete report on that. Finally, just in terms of the construction of the jail, we continue to be at a very early point in the project, on time and within budget. We've completed the test borings for the foundation, and you will receive a major bid package for the grading foundation and structure in August, and we're on schedule to deliver that. So with that, that completes my report to Mr. President, members of the board. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any question? Just one question on the jail. Now that we have absence of our really very capable, special, outstanding lieutenant, who's running that project now for the sheriff's department?
The project is being overseen by the Assistant Sheriff Sanchez, and team members within the team, the sheriff's sergeant that's been assigned to team, as well as Sam, are also picking up additional responsibility in the...in what we hope is the very short period of time that Lieutenant Bazan is absent.
We all hope for the best for her. She really is a pretty special person and probably put together, I think, a pretty good team, but sure hope that she comes back and gets back on that project. I think she's an important part of that. I have one speaker here, and I'm actually going to let Martin Fox speak on both items at the same time. It's okay?
Thank you very much, all of you, for your service to the county. I appreciate it, and I try not to waste your time. Supervisor Pine settled a little bit of my thunder when you started talking about positions in BHRS. So I'll talk about the additional $5 million that creeped in over the last year. It continues to be the same old thing, and that is a budget that ignores the issue of treatment resistance. It does not provide a treatment resistance solution. Forty-five other states, most recently including Nevada, after they got their hands slapped for shipping the mentally ill to other states, have now adopted assisted outpatient treatment. And that's a reflection of a systems problem, very much like the one that Supervisor Groom brought to your attention with the Big Lift. And a systems problem needs a systems solution. It's a long-term problem. This is also about the future of our young people because this treatment resistance in the form of anosognosia typically arises in young adults, just when they're beginning to start to be productive members of society and condemns them to very unproductive lives. We do need a 21st century solution, just like the Big Lift, and that's what assisted outpatient treatment is. Otherwise, it wouldn't have been adopted in 45 other states. The Department of Justice certified Laura's Law as an effective, efficient hospitalization and incarceration recidivism reduction program. And that's just what you brought to our attention, Supervisor Horsley, with the Big Lift. It's the...it has the same effect, and it's a well-documented effect. The Mental Health Services Act expressly provides that programs it funds shall be designed to prevent mental illness from becoming severe and disabling, which means there should be an underlying diagnosis, and the Mental Health Services Act funds should be directed towards programs that prevent that mild mental illness from becoming severe and disabling. You can measure it by the positive outcomes that are mentioned in a negative form in Welfare and Institutions Code, Section 5840. It needs to reduce suicides. It needs to reduce incarcerations. It needs to reduce school failures and dropouts. It needs to shorten suffering and reduce homelessness and keep children in their homes. Let's spend $2 million on something that does that because in February, you had a parent come here and tell you that the PREP program does not work.
Okay. Thanks, Marty. That's board members' reports. Supervisor Slocum, you have a report?
Equipment malfunction. I just wanted to mention quickly that Supervisor Carol Groom and I, along with many, many others, especially Barti Rusman Kudron, is that...did I pronounce her name right?
I think so.
Kicked off the nomination period for the San Mateo County Poet Laureate on Saturday, June 8th, at the county fair. I thought there was a pretty good crowd there. We were entertained by music poetry readings, and there were probably 30 or...I'm not sure, 30...
Fifty.
Fifty, 50 people there. And there were some...a lot of poems that were submitted at the fair, and it was quite an event, so very pleased about that, and thank Supervisor Groom for her leadership on that. And also, special thanks to Julie Fellers, and a real big shout-out to the county librarian, Anne Marie Despain, who...whose staff really, in just a couple of days, put together a website, put together flyers, and got the word out to the libraries. And if you took a look at that website, which is samatemaeo countypoet.org, I think you'll be amazed at how artful and high-quality it is. So special thank you to her and her staff up at the library system.
Supervisor Slocum, you're too modest. This is your...this was your idea, and you and your staff have done the bulk of the work, and you are...you get the credit for its success because it really was a successful afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Okay. Supervisor Tessier?
Yes, I have a couple things. First off, I'd like to adjourn in memory of former mayor and city council member Steve Waldo. He was a council member in Brisbane. He also served as mayor for four times. You know, he was really a great guy. I knew him fairly well over the years, not only in public office but in private, the private sector. He was very creative, incredibly intelligent, had a high degree of integrity, and a really quick wit. He was...he was really incredibly devoted to his community. He did a lot of great work. He was very easy to work with, and he will be sorely missed. He had resided in Brisbane since 1986. He first was elected in 1989, re-elected in '93 and '97, then he ran unopposed for a vacant seat in 2005, and again was re-elected in 2007. So he was very loved by his community, and he will be sorely missed. Just a terrific guy. Terrific guy. The other one is Dennis Marino. He died at the age of 84. He's predeceased by his beloved wife, Virginia. He had five children, 21 grandchildren, three great-grandchildren. He was the owner of the Magic Chef Deli, if you remember, in Skyline Plaza.
Sure.
Yeah, he graduated from...in 1947, from St. Ignatius High School. He owned that deli for 40 years. He was a big fan of the Giants and also the Lone Ranger, and, you know, many of us spent a lot of time up at getting sandwiches at that deli, and he was just a wonderful guy, always engaging, had his children working with him for a good period of time, and he too... with him for a good period of time, and he, he too will be sorely missed, a great member of our community. Just wanted to make a couple quick announcements. As you know, we had Disaster Preparedness Day this past Saturday at the fair. It was really a, a great day. We got to, people were able to have CPR classes, learn about contingency plans for their disasters, for disasters, and watch community emergency response exercises. And of course, as always, the children love the trucks and, and all the apparatus, and they love watching the rescue dogs. What was nice this year, it was the third time we had done this in conjunction with the first day of the fair. In the first hour, which we let people in free, free and free parking, we had twenty-seven hundred people come through the door. By noon, we had thirty-five hundred people and well over a thousand families. So I think sometimes people wonder why you keep repeating it every year, but you know what's nice about it is that those thousand families, they may not be the same families that came the previous year. So I want to give a great congratulations to Captain Weiss and his OES crowd, staff, and also Central, County Central Fire, AMR, the National Weather Service, the whole sheriff's department, the Coast Guard, and that's just a few. There are people from all the different cities with, in bringing all of their equipment and, and people to staff their, their equipment. We also had great sponsors in the Daily Journal, the Examiner, KGO, Ron Owens, Ceremony Shopping Center, PG&E, and Silicon View. So I do want to, and also I'd like to thank my staff. They did a tremendous amount of heavy lifting and do so every year. The second thing I want to mention is we have some upcoming older driver safety seminars. We're continuing those with the California Highway Patrol volunteers, the DMV and SAM Trans, and we have one coming up this Friday, June twenty-first in South San Francisco, another one August twenty-seventh in Belmont, September nineteenth in Redwood City, and October seventeenth in San Mateo. And they can also, these dates and times can be also found on my website or by calling my office. And the last thing, you know, we spent a lot of time today talking about the schools and how we've collaborated, collaborated well with them on many fronts, including this early intervention with the preschool. As you know, we held a summit on April twenty-ninth with Congresswoman Spear, our law enforcement, mental health services, and the schools, and came up with three task forces to try to implement standardization in our response to any kind of violence on a school campus. We talked about information sharing, how do we work together to share information to best serve these children, and two, the collaboration and leveraging of funds for mental health services. So all of the task forces have met thus far, and we are actually going to regroup next week to see what kind of progress we've made. And I have to say that, you know, a lot of our departments, including Steve with the Behavioral Health, has really helped ahead of time get a lot of these ducks in line, so to speak, and same with the schools and law enforcement over some of these standardization plans. So we've really made some progress even before we got to the task force, and I really believe what you'll see as we get closer to budget time is we're going to be bringing things back to try to include some of this in the September budget. But I, I really want to thank John Byers, who's been a huge help with all these task force, forces, and I think we're making some significant progress in an area that I think is incredibly important for our children. That's my report.
Agreed. Supervisor-
I don't have a report, but thank you.
Supervisor Pine?
I just wanted to thank Supervisor Horsley, and I believe Supervisor Slocum, for attending the Fatherhood Collaborative. I wasn't able to be there this weekend. I was away with my family, so I appreciate you filling in for me.
Oh, sure, yes. That was great. I have a couple of adjourned memories. Actually, there's one guy who's, who's a reporter, Bill Workman, was here for a long time. He was, worked for the Chronicle when we used to have coverage by the San Francisco Chronicle, as well as the Mercury, and what used to be the San Mateo County Times. And he spent a lot of time in our newsroom here. He was also a neighbor of mine. I used to see him running around the neighborhood all the time. He has distinctive ponytail, covered a lot of criminal justice stuff. One of the most interesting cases in this little obituary was the case where, I forgot the, the name of it, but it was Susan Nason, who was murdered by a guy named Franklin. And, you know, the sheriff's department, because it was a sheriff's department case, we, of course, wouldn't give him any information about who the potential witness was. And so we went over to a cop bar, and sure enough, they told him. And so he broke the case, he broke the story in the San Francisco Chronicle. It was actually Franklin's daughter. It was a very interesting case that Susan Nason had an uncanny resemblance to Franklin's daughter's, her daughter, and when, when she saw the two pictures together, you know, brought back the repressed memory, and, and the case was, was an interesting case. And he, he, he covered that amongst other things in San Mateo County when we used to be covered by the press. I do also want to adjourn in memory of another person who's close, actually pretty close to me, Rex Geithner. There isn't anything in the newspaper about him, except what I know about him. I, I knew him for many years, even when I was sheriff, and he was working with our planning department to get a winery built on the south of Skyline. It was called, it is called Claude de la Tech, really kind of a remarkable place. If you haven't been there, you know, it's, it's just, it's a remarkable facility. It's actually owned by another gentleman, but Rex came from Napa. He was a vintner in Napa, and he's one of the best at this. And so the, the owner of Claude de la Tech wanted to have the best Pinot Noir in the state of California. And so he's got all these, all this special equipment and special vines and stuff, and Rex was the guy that he brought out here to get this winery in place. In that case, he was the president of the Farm Bureau, San Mateo County Farm Bureau. He was the Farmer of the Year, and recently was diagnosed with bladder cancer, went to Cancer Center in Texas, and unfortunately told there was nothing they could do. He came home and, within a few days, passed away. So he was a great guy, friend, and I will miss him. That concludes my report. We'll now adjourn to closed session. Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Byers, can you report on results of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The board did take action to deny claims filed by fifteen cities with regard to potential litigation involving what is known as property tax administrative fees, or PTAF. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We will now adjourn.